Sauk and Fox and Dakota Peoples, we celebrate and honor these lands and their sacred significance to indigenous peoples. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Board Director Maggie Smith, would you please call the roll?
Kadija Islam.
Excuse.
Chris Lau.
Here.
Lindsey Need.
Here.
Maggie Smith here. Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
Barb Wunsch.
Here.
Abigail Holtie.
Here.
Jennifer Deek.
Here. All right, with six of the seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Chris has moved.
Second.
Bridget has seconded. To approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. We do not have any public participation this evening. So, moving on to recognition and thank yous. Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, so tonight, this is one of my favorite nights in that. I love having all of the students here to present. And tonight, we're going to recognize, we had four foreign exchange students this year at our high school. And tonight, just want to take a moment to recognize them and to present them with their certificate of commendation. And I'm going to mention three of them. They weren't able to make it. And then we have one of them here with us this evening with their host family, which we're very excited about. So Alex Stein was from Germany and hosted by the Bushman family. And then Leonie Norp was from Germany and hosted by Terence Smine. And Sabrina, I apologize if I am not saying their last names correctly, Stelrecht. And then Emma Fumani from Italy was hosted by William and Katie Favre. So we just want to thank them for taking time and hosting them. And then with us this evening, we have Frederick. And he is hosted by the Fleece family. And if they could come up and if he could share a little bit about who he has here with him and how his experience has been here at the Holman High School. Thank you for coming this evening. We're excited to have you.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me today. Yeah, I'm Frederick. I'm 16 years old. I'm from Germany. And I brought my host family with me. That's Adam and Jennifer, my host parents, and then both of my host brothers, James and Eli. Yeah, we're having a great time. I've been with them since March. We went to Colorado, which was a lot of fun. Yeah, we're having a good time. Yeah, I'm really enjoying my time here. I've been here since August, which is about like eight months now. And I'm going back in July. And yeah, I had a great time, made amazing new friends, played soccer in fall, which was a fun experience. And then a lot of skiing in the wintertime at Mount La Crosse and with the ski club. Yeah, now I had the chance to go on a few trips to Colorado, Hawaii, and to Los Angeles, which I really enjoyed. Yeah, now graduation is coming up for me. I get the chance to do like a walk, do the walk, which is going to be exciting. Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for having me here today and yeah, having me for the last few months was an unforgettable experience. And yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Frederick.
Just hold on one second, Frederick.
Got something for you. All right. And also tonight, we have a recognition of a staff member, Kamlyn Roswell, Roswell, sorry, and that. She has been in our district for many years and has done a lot of outstanding work, not only in the classroom but with our students outside of the classroom for many hours. Lots of dedication there. And I just would like for, we have Adam with us today, if he could come up and Kamlyn and share the award that she recently received and what that was about. And we're just very excited for her for this accomplishment.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Jacoby. I'm Executive Director of the Wisconsin Interscholastic Speech and Dramatic Arts Association, based in La Crosse, Wisconsin, so right here in the Cooley region. We sponsor interscholastic middle and high school activities in speech, what was commonly known as forensics for many years until the crime scene investigation, pop culture community kind of co-opted that, debate, film, and theater. And Kamlyn has been the advisor of both theater, one act, and speech at Holman High School. And more importantly, she has served as a member of our Board of Directors for the last 11 years as our Board Chair and as our Board Treasurer. So she has been an instrumental part of leadership of our association, particularly as we have marched forth into the 21st century in modernizing and automating and all of those things that small nonprofit organizations like ours need to do to serve our schools and school districts better and more efficiently. And I'm proud to say that during my 11-year tenure as the administrator, we have not raised any of our dues or fees because of a lot of that automation and that fiscal restraint that our treasurer has helped guide us through. So we're just grateful that your school district so generously shares the expertise of an educator like this, not only with her own students, but with the entire state through her leadership. So thank you. That's what this award is for, is recognizing great leaders like Kamlyn.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. So the Lynn Lucy Leadership Award, so we're very proud of her accomplishments. So thank you for being here and sharing that. And just two other recognitions. We have a student Addison Willie, and we want to congratulate her. She is one of 15 high school seniors statewide, named to the Wisconsin Department of Agricultural Trade and Consumer Protections Agriculture Youth Council. So she'll be representing Holman at the, basically, and serving through her leadership for Wisconsin in agriculture. So we're very excited for her. And then lastly, our Nutrition Services Department received the lunch trailblazer recognition award recently. And what this recognizes is that they implemented at least two strategies to reduce sodium on the lunch menu. And as a result of their team, and they do such a wonderful job with their homemade recipes. And they cook from scratch and create these healthy meals. And we're just very proud of them and how they continue to really be, they're well-known throughout the nation, and people are actually calling them for the recipes. So we're just so proud of our Nutrition Services team and all that they do. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to reports and discussion. Item 8.1, I welcome the Holman Middle School Student Council members to present their annual report.
Do you have a presentation? You could go over and sit at the, you guys can go over by the table. Or wherever you want them. Okay, all righty.
Yeah, there you go.
Thanks. Thanks for being here. Okay, I'm not going to talk long, because this is for them. But I'm Jen Dinger, and I am one of the advisors. Andrea Cortez is my co-advisor.
She had to go pick up her daughter, who's just returning from a year abroad in her first year of college. So she was not able to be here tonight. But I have three of our amazing student leaders here to introduce themselves and tell you what we've been up to this year.
So you're going to have to come speak in the microphone, so all your YouTubers can see you.
My name is Brynlee Ammerman, and I'm in 7th grade. And this is my second year of student council. And I really enjoyed and participated a lot in the finger knitting project this year. That was my favorite.
Awesome.
My name is Ellie Monroe, and I am also in 7th grade. And this is also my second year in student council.
My name is Charlotte Randalls. I'm in 7th grade, and this is also my second year of student council. The HMS Student Council is one of the few clubs in the middle school that functions the entire year. We have a great group of 40 to 50 students who desire to make a difference in their school community and beyond. We try to be flexible to allow members to be involved in student council while encouraging them to participate in other activities they're interested in, which means our active community changes.
We have a great group of 40 to 50 students who desire to...
As typical, we kick off our year by inviting students to apply to student council in the first couple weeks of school. Our first big activity of the year is to participate in the homecoming parade. We pair up with the drama club, as we often have a number of students in common. The best part of walking in the parade is showing our HMS pride to all the people in our community. With an earlier start to the year, helping families at fall conferences and volunteering at the Holman Area Community Center's annual pumpkin fest rounded out service for term one. Student council also helped out the fundraiser pickup just after the term change. So it was included in our November meeting celebration of participation in the Box Tops for Education program. This is one of the opportunities for families and community members to support our project and activities by simply scanning the receipts of the groceries they are already purchasing. As of May 1st, we have made over $250 for our service activities.
Nice job.
One of the very important activities we are involved in during the fall is our Veterans' Day Assembly. You can see from parts of the program and the roles we played in the background. HMS Student Council members are very important to helping create a respectful program for our community to honor our veterans. This year, Charlotte's dad, electronic technician, 2nd class, Chris Randalls, was the honored veteran guest. He shared a message of service, learning love of travel, and creating a path that fits your talents and strengths with our student body and community guests. November is a busy month for our group, as after the week of Veterans' Day, we celebrated our amazing staff by putting together and sharing a little hot cocoa treat for them to let them know how much we value them. The next activity is one of our favorites. We come together to mix up and bake 60 pumpkin pies for the Onalaska and Holman Community Thanksgiving Dinner. We are grateful for our HMS Nutrition Team and custodial staff who are always supportive and help us make this annual event a success. We can't imagine this tradition ending in our yearly calendar of activities. After the busyness of November, we keep rolling in December with helping set up the Green and Gold Event, which is a celebration of our fall fundraiser. Rounding out the calendar year, we use our monthly meeting as a time to celebrate, build connections between team members, and serve our community. This year, we split our time of enjoying snacks and playing silly games with an hour of service. Everyone could choose one of the projects to help with, making pans of pasta bake, which were then donated to the Catholic Charities Warming Center, making cards for some of our elderly community members at the Heights Assisted Living Center, crocheting hearts with one of our amazing long-term subs, Laura Wyker, or beginning the basics of finger knitting for our blanket project. We celebrated the Term Two service at our February meeting. There were a lot of hours logged for quite a few members, especially those that volunteered during hours of fundraiser pickup and green and gold setup. We also had a shout-out for one of our 6th grade members, Solone Urtram, who took initiative to make her idea of finger knitting blankets as a service project into reality.
Our fiber arts project of finger knit blankets and crocheting hearts for the Little Heart Project started off as Term Two wrapped, but really took off in Term Three. The Student Services Office serves as a home base for members to volunteer during academy when they don't have any homework. Many hours of volunteering were logged during Term Three on the two projects, both at school and by members working on their blanket or crocheting hearts at home. Leonard Swanson, an amazingly retired in the Holman community, first connected with us last year as we tried to get going with our involvement in the Little Heart Project. He returned a couple more times in Term Three to help teach a handful of our members how to crochet hearts, including Mrs. Dinger. Since then, new members have learned from one another, and we've even had a few friends of members join in the activity. In February, we enjoyed hosting a month of events to help everyone break up the winter and all the challenges that come along with the school year in the middle of a major construction project. We sponsor a dress-up day each week, a Guess How Money game the week of Valentine's Day, and a week with a focus on random acts of kindness. Just last week, we finished up another one of our favorite yearly activities when we hosted the Staff Lunch-In during Teacher Appreciation Week. We treated the staff to a meal on Tuesday with decor and a menu, all pointing towards summer being just around the corner. It was a lot of fun for students to put everything together and to be able to greet and serve staff and watch them enjoy some time to connect with each other. Tomorrow, as part of our Mental Health Week activities, all of our hard work on Little Heart Project will be coming together. Each advisory has been given enough hearts for each student who would like to participate to take two hearts with a positive message. The hope is that they will find a message that they personally needed to hear to lift them up, and that will take the second heart to share with someone or place somewhere in the community for someone to find. To round out our year, we will be helping with 5th grade visits next week and having our end-of-the-year meeting to celebrate our fun of service and service. Thank you for your time this evening. Does anyone have any questions for us?
No questions, but just thank you for all of your hard work. I personally know lots of people who are impacted by the Little Heart Project. That's really incredible that you took that on.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Can you stand over here for a picture?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
If you just want to turn around right there.
Nice job.
Perfect, thank you.
Yay! Nice job.
All right, moving on to item 8.2, I welcome Holman High School Student Council members to present their update to the board.
Do they need help finding their presentation?
She circled.
There we go.
Hello, we are, um, Holman High School Student Council. I am Haley Olson, and I am the president.
I'm Jonah. I am the community service rep.
I'm Aubrey Shea. I am the senior representative.
I'm Julia McBride. I'm the sophomore rep.
And I'm Abby Holtie, and I'm the vice president.
So the first thing is that we adapted to the new schedule. So we used to meet before school last year, but this year, we have weekly, we meet during advisory. So each Tuesday, we meet during advisory, and that is full council, which is currently 41 members. And then Wednesday mornings, just the officers and the advisors meet to plan out our next meeting and plan out events.
For homecoming, we had a theme of no place like Holman, and it was the Wizard of Oz. We organized the parade, and we went over there and helped set up the parade route. We organized the movie night, and next year's theme is disco.
For standout students this year, we had over 147, still counting, because we're still going. And this year, in the spring assembly, we hope to give them prizes. We have candy, and, well, the students really like bubbleers, too, so we got some of those. At the bottom of the grid are what they were nominated for. We have always an overwhelming of excellence, meaning they did well in a class, or the teacher thought they did a good job on their project. They get, to keep going, they get a little card. So what happens is the teacher will write whatever they wanted to write, and then we will write out whatever they wrote on the computer in a card form, hopefully with some nice handwriting. And then we give that to their advisors, so then they can see the handwritten message of whatever their teacher thought. And that's really the importance of it, to know that they're doing a good job and that they should keep going.
So each month, we draw names for our staff appreciation and parking. So we have one spot in each lot that a staff member each month gets to park there for the whole month. And it's really fun to go around and tell the staff member that they won parking spot for the month. And it's just really cool to see how happy they get. And they're like, yay, it's cold, I get to park right here and walk straight in instead of picking a new spot every day. So I was the head of this project this year, and it was just really cool to do this every month and see each staff member.
And then like every year, we had two blood drives this year, one in the fall, November 8th, and one in the spring, March 28th. This is a great opportunity for us, since it's a full day of service for some of our members. Usually, we run otherwise an AM/PM shift. So we were able to collect 17 units of blood, which each unit can be used for three different people, or as we usually say, lives. So we were able to collect well over 300 ways, I guess, to save people, which is really big, especially since this is just coming from our students. And we have had a long history of working at the Red Cross. We're looking to continue this into next year as well. We probably won't have another summer blood drive, but we are so excited to continue with our fall and our spring. So this year, we brought back a little shopping challenge we did. So we get a big group of kids together, and we break into separate groups, and we go to festivals, and we shop for a bunch of families in need. So it's kind of like Price is Right. So we compete for who is closest to $50, who had the most amount of like different items on our list, and who was the fastest. So after we collected all of these items, all these items got donated to Holman's Hope. So this all went back to our community, and it was a really good team bonding experience. And then whoever won in the different categories got different prizes.
We did a hot cocoa event. A team of students planned to have hot cocoa one week over the winter. Students arrived school early to set up. And then days of planning and serving made for great bonding within the council and happiness for their peers at school.
One of our bigger projects this winter, so we all kind of divide into groups, but this was one where we kind of all worked together, was creating care packages for the homeless in our community who needed extra help during the wintertime. So we got the supplies online, and each member donated about $5. And then we used some budget from our student council money to get a bigger budget, so that we could buy more things. And then we gave it to WIN, which is What I Need Now. It's a program. And they go around, and then they distributed it. So we didn't hand them out directly, but we got them some supplies that they recommended and that they needed.
The Salvation Army, so we go about once a month on Saturdays, and we go and we bag lunches, and we give them out to people at the window from about 11 to 12:30. And it's really cool to just go into the community and experience giving out food and talking to different people, and not even getting outside of Holman as well to meet other people around the area.
And then we do many different events that are just sort of miscellaneous service events throughout the year that we are very happy to be able to participate in. So we have our ASL DAPD Sports League concessions, which we have run through the spring especially. And then during some of our team bonding events, we have gone to their games, made posters beforehand to support, especially since these games happen during practices for other events in the school and activities. So it's really good to have some strong student section representation there for them. They really enjoy that support. And then we also got to help with the Holman's Hope Chili Cook-Off this year, where we helped set up and sell tickets at the event. And it was really a good experience for connecting back to the community. Sometimes we stay pretty focused on the school, but this was a really good way for us to get out and connect a little bit more at the American Legion. So one perk of being in student council is that there is plenty of scholarships. So student council, if you have four years of service, you have the opportunity, three members can win $250. If you donated blood during the blood drive, seniors who donated get their name entered into a drawing. So two students will each receive $500. And then for a standout student award, all the seniors that were awarded a standout student award this year, two of them will be awarded $200 each. So that is, these are some more pictures of our various events from throughout the school year. This was basically just a big snapshot of things we did, but we've done a lot of other smaller events this year as well. But that is all we have. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? No questions. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of great things.
Great job.
A lot of great things.
All right, moving on to item 8.3. Jackie Panhurst will now present the Long Range LMC Plan. This item is for report only and will not appear on a consent agenda.
All right. Hi, I'm Jackie Panhurst. I am the LMC Director at the middle school.
And I am Stacy Eskelson. I'm mostly at Evergreen, but I teach through sections at Prairie View as well.
So we're here to give an update. Last year, I came and presented. So all school districts in Wisconsin are required to have a long-range library plan on file with DPI. And so we are just giving kind of an update of where we're at with our different goals and some things that have happened in our libraries throughout the year. So this is just kind of a reminder of what those long-range plan goals were. So we selected three different areas. And one of them was about aligning curriculum standards to a K-12 scope and sequence, increasing professional development delivered by our team, and then increasing visibility of library resources that can be utilized by staff and students. So for each of these goals, we're on a three-year plan. And so we have broken down each of those goals of like, year one is, here's what we need to accomplish, here's what we're doing in year two. So for our first goal, we wanted to start aligning our standards to a K-12 scope and sequence. And this year, currently, all of our curriculum is aligned to the Wisconsin Standards for Information and Technology Literacy, which are currently under review. So this is one that we kind of put on pause for this year. The new standards are projected to be completed this summer. So that's something that we're going to be revisiting and doing kind of a double goal on next year, once we have those finalized standards. The next one, increasing professional development. So in our first year for this goal, we were just looking to identify what are some programs and resources that we can offer to staff and students, and kind of making a list to start organizing what training we can provide. So as a team, we've all identified different programs and services that our staff and students can use. And then next year, we will start kind of putting together trainings or organizing trainings that we already have, so that we can start pushing those out. And then, there we go, our last one, so increasing visibility of library resources. This year, we were collecting data on different units and projects from the general curriculum that we could collaborate with. And so in every building, we have looked at different curriculum areas and found some ones that we can support. And sometimes, that looks like teaching skills that students then go back and use in their general curriculum classes. And then we have, as a district, adopted some new ELA curriculum. So we've started to look at what are some areas that kids are learning about in those classes that we can increase the resources that they have in the library to kind of support some of those high interests. We also just wanted to share, we are so grateful that we have the library programs that we do in Holman. So all of our buildings have a full-time librarian and aide. And so we just wanted to share, we know that everybody loves libraries, but some actual like studies that have been done about the impact of school libraries. So since 1992, there have been studies that have been done all across the country. And what they find is that when schools have a full-time qualified school librarian, it does increase those test scores, not only in reading, which you would expect, but also in writing and math. The math one was a little surprising to me. But it does have an impact in all areas and graduation rates as well. In Wisconsin, there was a study, and you can tell this is kind of an older study, because it pulls from the WKCE, which is what our forward test used to be... it pulls from the WKCE, which is what our Forward Test used to be called. But again, we just see those increase in scores in schools that have that full-time librarian, and then when there's a full-time assistant, that helps it go up even more. So, we are really grateful to be able to have the programs that we have in our school district. And with that, we just wanted to share, what are some things that we've been doing in our libraries? So, in the high school, um, they have implemented some new study hall procedures, so they're using a virtual pass system, um, so that more kids are able to access the library during different times. They have, um, the student leadership team comes in and uses that. They've hosted, um, a game club, they have the GSA Club and a writing club, and then next year, they're bringing back their book club. They have a creative writing revision and picture book workshop, that was a huge success for them. And then they have a ton of space that other programs get to use, so DECA, ELA, and other class projects come into the library and April to work in those spaces. And they have a Makerspace that is being used constantly and has all kinds of different stuff in it. At the middle school, I am proud to say that we have survived construction. We're in just the ending phases. We're starting to actually move into our new space, um, but we were able to get set up in a temporary location this year, so that students still had access to all those library services. In seventh grade, we did a new activity. This was a lot of fun. So, um, they do a lot of poetry in seventh grade ELA, and we did a digital magnetic fridge poetry and blackout poetry, so all the students got a chance to create one of those. Eighth grade worked on a digital breakout room, learning about different privacy policies for all the apps that they are using. And sixth grade, this is a controversial one. Some kids love it, some kids hate it, and I get it, but we learn about how to make a good password, and then everybody has to change theirs, and some of them react the same way I do when I have to change my password, but some of them are really excited about it. Um, we also support NHD students through that whole research project. And then, um, a new program that we have this year, so elementary used this last year, and we adopted this year, is Book Break, which is, um, a virtual author visit. So, author visits are super expensive to get them to like come out to your school, but Book Break allows for kids to watch live or recorded like author talks. Um, and they have a variety, they have really great authors, and they have a variety of different lengths. And this year, they actually made it so kids could watch them on their own, so we've been kind of testing that out and pushing those out. And one exciting thing for us was before they have an author talk, you can submit different questions, and one of our sixth graders got their question picked to be asked of one of the authors.
Okay, so at the elementary level, at Prairie View Elementary, um, Peg, excuse me, Peg had two breakfasts in books, um, where she collaborates with food services, and she has, um, families come in and they can eat and enjoy, um, the library space. She had an author visit as well this year. Every year, she does the Iditarod Read-A-Thon, where she, um, uses the funds to get authors to come in and new furniture for the LMC. Literati is another way to do book fairs. Oh, the Kleenex box, that was really cute this year, um, the kids, it was optional. The kids could decorate a Kleenex box by some book character, and then she had them all on display in the LMC, and she also got Kleenex then for her space, so that was a double, double layer.
Yeah, they're so good way to do it.
Since we seem to go through that a lot.
Resourceful.
Yes, exactly. Um, they just finished up their Lager Dogs Reading Club Challenge, and so those kids that were able to make it around all four bases have gotten a ticket to go see, um, the Lagers play. At Prairie View, they've had 2,428 student views on Book Break. They have voted for the Wisconsin Golden Archer Book Award. What's unique about that is it's only given out in Wisconsin, and it's an award that the kids get to vote on, not adults. And they think that is like the coolest thing, that they get to vote on it. And circulation for Prairie View, 19,198 items, 441 holds as of the end of April, and they're still going strong here there. Sand Lake did QuickBooks, which is a partnership with QuickTrip and their PTG, um, just another way to get students involved in reading on a monthly basis. During American Education Week, they had guest readers from the community come in and, um, read with the fifth through kindergarten through fifth grade classes during their library times. During their library classes, students wrote thank you messages to staff members. They also had two literati book fairs, and they have some of the high school National Honor Society students come to help with the organization of that. Collection development, that has been a big thing that we've all been working on this year. At, at Sand Lake, they added nonfiction materials to complement the new ELA unit themes and students' interests. They're establishing a large print collection, um, for some of their chapter books that they have. They're finding that some of the kids enjoy having the bigger font than the smaller font, that is typical of a fiction book. They had 1,695 student views on the Book Break. I didn't pull my records for that, I should have. And they also did the Wisconsin Golden Archer Book Award at Sand Lake. MySpace at Evergreen Elementary has been very chaotic. Construction was not supposed to have started until summer, and then it was said, oh, we're going to start after spring break, and then they're like, no, two weeks after we got back from Christmas, we want to start now. So, MySpace has been kind of a mess, um, but everybody's hanging in there, and we're looking forward to our new space for next year. Back in the fall, I taught the third through fifth graders how to use some of our online resources, like PebbleGo, PebbleGoNext, and Britannica School Elementary. That was paired up with a, a project that they were doing, so they were able to use those resources. Right before our winter break, I had fourth and fifth graders create a gift of thanks for a staff member. It was just a way for them to say thank you to one of their favorite teachers, or share a memory of one of their teachers with them. I'm actually going to have the fifth graders doing that again here for the end of the school year, since they leave us, um, at the end of May. For collection development, I was very pleased that we were able to get a 5% increase in our SEL books. For those of you that don't know, SEL is, um, social emotional learning. It's late in the day for me. So, we've, we've added more of those, and I've been noticing the teachers are checking them out to use them with their classes more often, so that makes me feel good. We also, um, added to our Makerspace materials. I purchased some Spiro Indy Cars, which is a little car that is an introduction to coding. They have these tiles that are colors, and so the kids have to create a, a pathway, and the car goes on it, and then it, for each color, it does something different. And I've been using it with all different grade levels, and it's just amazing to me some of the things that they can come up with, um, when we're doing that. We celebrated Read Across America by creating banners of favorite books. I think that has been one of the most interesting things for me. We had teachers doing it, we had all of the students doing it, and then we had two teachers that went around and hung them up all over the building, and sort of walk around and see whose book, who had what favorite book, and who had the same book that you loved was awesome. We also voted for the Golden Archer Awards, and, um, I'm in the process of reviewing. Sora is an online library that we subscribe to. We have access to it at home and at school, and so I'm doing a review in the next week or so, so that they can use it at school and have access to some, um, books and audiobooks online.
And that's one that, we have K-12, so if you need some summer reading, that's available all summer.
And Viking is also in the process of getting ramped up for their new space next year. They celebrated multiple days, including DOT Day, Read Across America, March Madness, a food drive, Election Day. They are the building that has 4K currently, so they, um, have the 4K students checking out twice a month, so they have some access to the books. A reading parade for kindergarten. First graders got to study different authors. Second grade sampled some new books in a book tasting. Third grade read The Three Little Pigs and designed a fourth house. Fourth graders solved breakout challenges and had ice cream. Ooh, I want to be invited to that.
You know, they have a lot of treats at Viking. We might have to incorporate that district-wide.
Um, and fifth graders served as student anchors for their, um, daily announcements that they have.
That's the end for us. Thank you so much for letting us come and share that with you.
Real quick, is the Sora an app?
Yes.
Okay.
It is.
A free download for anybody in the App Store? Okay, cool.
Well, this is always one of my favorite presentations of the year. I just believe truly that our, our LMCs are like the hub of our schools, just like we see our public libraries are becoming like the hubs of different neighborhoods. I just had one quick question. I saw recently, there was a group of Hmong students in Holman that wrote and like kind of published a book about a Hmong wedding, and I was just curious if any of you had anything to do with like assisting.
I didn't, did you?
I did not.
Oh, did you?
I have to assume that, well, was it at the high school? I don't, I can't remember if it was middle school or high school.
I do, I, I was not involved in the making of the book, but I did hear about the project, and I know that they were really excited. They're bringing them to the elementary schools to talk with our kids about it. So, I'm going to see if I can pop in the date that they're there to do that, so I can learn a little bit more too.
Great, thank you.
I have a question, it's a bit random though. I learned a couple years back that the DPI has public libraries in their purview, which was something that I didn't know. And I've always been curious, like, do they, do they work with school libraries? Do school libraries work with public libraries, or do they kind of stay in their own lanes? Like, is there any crossover?
I think, we do have partnerships with them, so, um, they, and I don't know if they come into elementary schools, they'll come in and promote like their summer reading program, and that's something that I, they don't come in for the middle school, because our schedule is a little bit tricky to facilitate that, but that's something where they'll share kind of all that information with us, and we send that out to students. And there's been other partnerships. So, last year, when we were starting our construction at the middle school, um, we got all the seventh graders signed up for library cards, and we walked over to the public library a couple times, so that they still had access to checkout. So, I think a lot of schools and public libraries try to collaborate as much as possible.
And they did offer to come out to the buildings to talk about their summer reading programs, but because of the lack of space at Evergreen, um, I declined that, but we did get the flyers, so the kids will be bringing those home for summer reading programs, and they will be sending me a video link that I share with all of the classes, so they have an idea of what's going on there. But yes, they're a great resource for us to have. We have several classrooms that walk to the, or, to the library, um, from Evergreen, so they're going about once a month, and so that's kind of a fun thing to see. And I know Viking too, with them closing down their LMC a little earlier, they've been taking students to the public library too, so, um, we definitely are working together. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to item 8.4. I welcome Sand Lake Principal Matt Myers to present the Sand Lake Elementary Highlights. This item is for report only and will not appear on consent agenda.
Thanks for having me tonight to talk a little bit about Sand Lake and some things we've accomplished throughout the course of the year. Having had the benefit of being the last elementary principal to present, I have a good outline of ideas. And then I also posed the question to our staff at our April 15th staff meeting, I said, I'm going to present on May 12th, what would you like me to present about? So, a lot of these things come right from our staff perspectives. Uh, the first thing that came through as a major theme that they want to highlight is how hard they're working to implement our new Amplify CKLA curriculum. So, not only, um, the curriculum on a day-to-day basis, but they've added creative and fun extensions to that, tons of celebrations throughout the school year, and this curriculum just allows our students to gain valuable background knowledge and experiences. Here are just a few of the celebrations that have gone on throughout the year, and then among the highlights I'd put here is that these celebrations have allowed me personally to dress up as Paul Bunyan, a doctor, and the Chair of the Potato Olympic Committee. It's been fun to be a dignitary. Uh, also highlighting our students' success and support on the social emotional learning side of things, we have a team that collaborates around the needs of our students, um, at different levels of support for our students, um, and our staff continue to work through and define those systems of support, so we make sure we're matching, um, the interventions that we're using to the student needs. Here's just a few more of our students here, including our two on the left, our Holman Rotary Teachers of the Month, which are nominated by our families. Mr. Hughes and Mrs. Seidel, our kindergarten teacher. Staff also wanted to highlight, um, their collaboration with each other, so we have supportive staff who, um, are welcoming our new staff to the building. We actually have a robust group of new staff this year, so it's been awesome to see, um, some of our teachers serve as mentors, and even those teachers who aren't serving as mentors doing that in an informal capacity. Our TLC Committee supports our staff members in times of need, um, highlighting in the work of our educational assistants who, um, do phenomenal work with our students and are great with the kids. Staff appreciate our games and bonding activities that our social committee hosts. And then recently, uh, this year, we started a program, our PBIS reward for our students, uh, our sand dollars, so if they're being safe, respectful, and responsible, and caught in the act, um, doing those things, our staff reward them with sand dollars. We started staff sand dollars this year as a way to recognize each other. And then we had a group of staff get together and realize that in every classroom that we enter, there's a handwritten staff dot, sand dollar from Allison Bolter, who passed, um, at the end of December into January there. So, um, they started an initiative, um, to close out the month of May and to close out the school year, to make sure we're honoring and recognizing Allison, celebrating each other by handing out as many staff sand dollars as we can throughout the month. This one kind of went viral, or Travis would say Holman viral. Our staff-themed dress-up days, including the big Anything But a Cup Day. So, those, these were secret to students, they got to see and try to guess along with what staff were doing, so, some of the creative solutions they came up with. Our PTG, um, not only involvement, but their support and expansion over the course of the year has been awesome to be a part of and see. So, they have a goal to increase community and family engagement within our school. So, among other things that they've done, they have a presence at Open House, they did the first Bingo Night that PTG hosted, uh, always supporting staff needs, um, a collaboration with student council to deliver donuts and coffee to staff in the morning, and then our LMC presentation included our new QuickBooks program. So, each, um, each month, the students get a calendar, and they can complete their reading challenges, should they choose to do that at home, and then PTG rewards, um, some big Squishmello prizes to some students who complete them. In addition, um, just want to highlight our student enrichment opportunities, so Noetic Math, Spelling B, Geography B, we have a Student of the Month program through our PBIS program, and, um, just a couple other additional things there at the end through our tag program. Here are just some of the things you see the kids doing, like this picture down here with the kids biting their medals. Also want to highlight our school-wide activities in our student leadership program, so we have an active student council, which is our fifth grade students, they, among other things, noted that they've helped the Rotary Club. We have a big all-school Earth Day celebration that we held on April 16th this year, and then we have some student clubs, our Drama Club, Garden Club, Student Council, and our newly-formed Yearbook Club, which helps in the creation of our school yearbook. There are just some of those, big Earth Day pictures. And then, um, we love our new playground, so I just want to talk about how cool those are for a little bit. Not only do the students love them, but our staff do as well. So, here's some highlights from our ribbon cutting ceremony, which feels like forever ago, but was just in August. You'll even see, um, some of our board members love the playgrounds as well, so. Just want to highlight a few other instructional highlights. Um, our, our district's work, and our school's really proud of the work we've done with the UWL Math Grant, so we had some teacher leaders, um, step up and take that on to the end of last year, and then that's continued, um, this year, as we have, um, expanded that to include our professional development days, including one that's coming up on Wednesday. We've also worked, um, and will debut at the start of next school year, a new mission and vision, that's been the focus of some of our work to close out the year. Our related arts staff just does a great job, and our students, um, love those classes. And then, um, highlighting specifically to some of our, um, upper-grade students, we had some teachers really, um, wanting to highlight that our students in special education are making great growth, and that shows in our school report card as well. We'll close with the Sand Lake staff. Again, that was the beginning of the year, as we took a nice picture on the brand-new playground together, something they say they'll do every year now, so. Any questions about Sand Lake?
All right, any questions?
I was worried about you having to follow our student council groups and our LMC directors, but you did really great.
I was worried about you having to follow our student council groups and our LMC directors, but you did really great.
Thanks, everybody.
Questions, thank you. All right, moving on to item eight point five. Director of Human Resources Melissa Kates and Dr. Mueller will present the 2025-26 Base Wages for Consent on the May twenty-seventh agenda.
Sorry, this probably won't be as exciting as the other presentations. All right, so, this evening, um, just wanted to start with, um, sharing each year when we, um, go to determine our base wage recommendations, um, to the board. Um, one measure that we use is the measure of what's called the Consumer Price Index and that, which is given to us annually each year. And this is just a chart of what that, um, Consumer Price Index has been over, um, time. And you can see it's been everything from point one-two to our current, this past year was two-point-nine-five. Um, one thing I want to mention is, as we're looking at this, um, I just want people to remember that the wages actually make up our largest portion of our budget. Um, that, you know, seventy-five percent approximately of our budget is for, um, our staff in that. Because if we don't have our staff, then, like, that's what makes our district. So, that's, um, one of our bigger investments in that. So, therefore, you know, any increase at all within the, um, wages, even something that would be less than our CPI this year, um, would have a, a significant impact to budget. So with that, um, it was estimated that the projected, um, budget impact, if a two-point-nine-five increase was to be given to our, all of our employee groups, it would be over a million dollars in this year. And one thing we always want to remember is, our wages are something that are ongoing and continue over time. So it's not like a one-time expense like other things, so. So, I'm gonna talk just for a little bit here on this, um, chart and so on. Um, so, what we have here, this is a budget forecast over time. Um, you can see, we have our current twenty-four-twenty, well, it has twenty-three-twenty-four, which is past, and then our current twenty-four-twenty-five year. And when you look at this, what it's showing, and I'll explain, it has two bar graphs. One is purple, and what that scenario is, is, um, a five percent increase in health, which we have a five-point-one-eight increase. Um, we were projecting a five percent increase in dental, which it was a negative increase, but that dental isn't have as much of an impact, um, in, in expense. And if we had a, a zero percent wage increase, so that's what the purple, um, is showing. The teal was, um, if we projected out a five percent health increase, five percent dental, the two-point-nine-five percent wage increase, and then going on after that, a two-point-five percent. So, um, what it's showing here is, in twenty-four-twenty-five, we actually, um, and this was something that was shared earlier, we have, we're projecting a two-point-five million, um, deficit in our, in our budget in that, and that's what this chart is showing. And then what you can see is, um, over time, that with no, um, with a zero percent wage increase there, we still have a two-million deficit, unless we were to do, make some changes within our district and do reductions in other places. Now, if we, um, were to give a wage increase, you can see, and the purpose of this graph is just to show how that multiplies over time, and then our deficit grows very quickly. Now, what we use at times to fill deficit is what we call fund balance. And I just want to talk a little bit about fund balance. Because fund balance is not like a savings account, you can go borrow, well, how should I put it? Fund balance is to be used for certain purposes, it's really, um, for cash flow purposes. So we have times where the state budget, they, we have our state budget, and then they give us dollars at certain times in the year. But we have bills to pay every month, we have staff to pay every month. So we have to make sure we have cash kind of in, uh, account so that we can make payments for our, to our staff and for those bills. Because if we don't have that, we would have to take out a loan and pay interest, and that wouldn't be right to do, um, because that would just create, you know, more money that we would have to ask taxpayers for and so on. So, as, we really like to have a healthy fund balance for that, and it also helps, um, you never know when you're gonna have that unexpected expense, one-time expense. A boiler goes down, or it's something like that, and you need to make a purchase that's large, so you need a fund balance for that. And then also, um, we've had many construction projects and we, you get what's called a Moody rating, and if you keep your fund balance to a certain percentage, or a healthy percentage, then when you borrow money, you get a much more competitive rate. And we've really saved a lot of dollars through having a healthy fund balance over time. We've saved lots of money getting very good competitive rates, um, with a lot of, with our construction projects. So those are reasons for it. And our board goal is twenty-six-point-three percent of the general fund expenditures for our fund balance. So what this is kind of showing is, um, really the, the situations with the purple, where we have the zero percent increase, but this is, if we were to backfill our deficit with our fund balance, this is kind of what it looks like over time in those two scenarios. So, what it's kind of showing you is it would deplete quickly, like in, what, showing you like in the next four years, it would be depleted, if we did nothing, um, and gave increases. If we have our scenario now, it would be getting very low and you wouldn't be meeting your goal. So with that, I just wanted to give some background in that. Um, at, before, and then Melissa's gonna share kind of what we're, the recommendation is for our, um, the, for this upcoming year for our wages then.
So as Dr. Mueller shared, looking at a zero percent base wage increase for twenty-twenty-five-twenty-six for all staff. Um, however, we do recognize, um, that, um, we have longevity increases for some of our staff, which are supplemental wage increases, those are separate from their base wages. Um, in our hourly classification and administrators and directors, there are some staff who, uh, would receive those longevity or supplemental increases, and we do want to honor and recognize staff for their longevity. So, um, the cost for that would be twenty-eight thousand seven-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. Um, that is split pretty even down the middle. For our hourly staff, it's around fourteen thousand seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. Um, and then for administrators and directors, um, just the longevity is the fourteen thousand nine-hundred-and-seven. Um, as we look to our educators, um, while there is not longevity, we do have educators who have obtained degrees, and we want to honor that as well for those educators. So, um, we would also recommend adding occupational therapists to that expanded master's degree stipend that was added last year. Um, so that would be a total supplemental increase for our educators of thirty-one thousand dollars for twenty-five-twenty-six. Looking at a total budget impact, um, as we recognize FICA and WRS as well, sixty-eight thousand nine-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars.
So, this, how do I, this is, um, we've received a lot of input from our staff as to what's important to them. While we're not able to offer a monetary raise at this point, there's a lot of uncertainty and unknown still with our state budget, federal budget. We don't know how those are gonna come out, we won't know till later this summer. And just the budget deficit we're currently in, we're taking many steps, um, in, that weren't reflected tonight in what we were showing you initially in the budgetary with the deficit. But we're taking many steps through attrition to, um, have, have reduction, to save dollars that will have an impact on the future. And we've, we're also, you know, we're looking at transportation, we've done a boundary change. We, like, we're taking many steps, and we'll come back and share more about all the different steps we're taking to close that budget deficit. Because we do know our, our people are very important, we value our people very much. And this is very hard, um, to say we have a wage increase of zero during times like now. And I just want to acknowledge that and recognize that to the board. But there are other ways we can show we value our staff in that. And, um, we're exploring other meaningful ways to show appreciation, and there's other things that we can do. So, um, we've received some input and we're exploring that. And, um, what we'll be doing is, any proposed changes would be brought to the board and would need to be approved before, uh, an employee handbook that would go into place in July. So we're sifting through the input and data and determining what that could look like and would be bringing that to the board with a recommendation in the future. Um, just wanted to make sure that that was shared this evening too. So, any questions?
So, I just want to be clear, especially for those who might be, um, viewing this. So if the purple, um, bars that you showed, so if we made the assumption that going forward, zero percent increase down the road, but our insurance costs go up, right? Is that, is that what's being reflected with the purple?
Yes.
That even just that increase dips into our fund balance, correct?
Correct, and, and also what's reflected here is that we're, we're showing that we're guaranteed three-twenty-five per pupil, which is still up to, up for debate. So, that scenario, we just don't know what that could look like either. Because that's built into this, as to why it, it's showing like an extra three-twenty-five per pupil each year, which is three-twenty-five plus three-twenty-five more, as to why you see that two-million deficit study. Because if that doesn't happen, then that would grow too. As to why, we know we have to take some steps to close the deficit so that we can get back on giving those wage increases. Because we want to continue to attract and retain, and we know we have to remain competitive. And by a zero percent this year, we know we're gonna have some catching up to do in that. So we're, have to take steps now so that we can ensure that in the future.
And, and I also, just because, I mean, we know the answer, like, we know we've been talking about the budget for many years, like, this is not new information. But again, for those listening, like, I just want to clarify and have you clarify that this is not new information around
Correct.
what financial
No.
state we are in.
No, we've been, we've been communicating with our staff through, um, fist, about our financial focus updates , um, for the past couple of years, or at least past year and some, in that. And, I mean, we have our annual meeting, and I encourage people to come to the annual meeting to see the budget and where we're at and what's happening. It's, it's really important, um, in, in what we're doing. Um, there's just always a lot of unknowns, and the economy changes very quickly. And in public education, the, we just weren't getting the inflationary increases over these years. What has changed a little bit is, for a while, we were doing fine because we would have, you know, our enrollment. You know, part of our funding is based on our enrollment, and then as we've had a slow decline, that slow decline is starting to catch up, as to why we really have to start looking at things more closely, so, yeah.
Can you remind me, uh, I was just really impressed with all the opportunities that staff have for their healthcare, for low-to-no-cost options. And I know you guys said you did some presentations. Did you do that for every school, or were all staff there? Was there a recording, is there an option for people to relook at that?
Yeah, so, we're gonna, do, would you like to speak? Yeah, sure, you can, Julie can, Julie is up to speed on it.
So we had the presentation to the board, um, for the approval of the renewals, uh, for July one. And then all staff were, um, provided opportunity to come and listen to Janice present to them. Um, that was today, there was two different sessions, um, and then that presentation will be posted. So they got an email with all the new rates, the changes that they'd be experiencing if they were eligible and participating, um, and then opportunity to take in more information. Um, tomorrow morning, uh, Janice from the Insurance Center and our, um, Benefit Specialist Amy Coxley, and either myself or Crystal will be at the TMT, uh, presenting for any of the positions, um, that kind of our house over there. So, maintenance, drivers, custodial staff, uh, all have an opportunity to take in a presentation. And then we'll be on-site if they need help with their open enrollment. Um, sometimes the population doesn't have as much tech-savvy, uh, experience to get into our employer nav, Employee Navigator system, and so we'll be there and able to help them. Um, if they forgot their password, figure that out and walk them through those steps to get them enrolled. Um, so it will be on the website, uh, the presentation, and it's also been shared with staff either through attending these or, um, future access via email or website.
Well, good, thank you. Thank you.
I think Maggie had a question.
Yeah, I guess I have a couple sort of on the same train of thought as what Bridgette was sharing. Sometimes after we get this presentation, I'll hear from folks who are like, "No one asked any questions." Um, so I just, I just want to reiterate, like, I have asked many questions, we have had closed session discussion, these graphs are not new to the board. Um, none of this information is new or should be new, in my opinion, to the community. Because like you said, this has been presented, I've been on the board since twenty-twenty-two now, and some version of this graph going that direction has been presented every single year. Um, so I just want to, I guess, state that for the, the YouTube audience. Um, and then the other couple of things I think I hear from people, I hear a lot about, you know, the fund balance, and like, you have all this money. Um, and I just want to like reiterate what Dr. Mueller already said, which is that the fund balance isn't like a slush fund, it isn't like a secret budget surplus that we have sitting over on the side. Um, it's very much like the emergency fund, um, you know, if you're, if we're not getting a payment on time, um, so that, you know, we're in a better position if we need to borrow. Um, and I think, I think everybody recognizes that, like, there's tremendous federal uncertainty right now, and so I know we haven't talked about that explicitly, but that's on my mind. Like, everything could get more expensive, um, if, you know, something shakes out with the tariff situation and the economy. Uh, n, no one really knows what's happening with the Department of Education or federal title dollars. Um, and so I think those factors, for me, come into play too with this decision. Like, I, it doesn't feel good, it's, it's not in line with my values. I think educators in general are undervalued and underpaid. Um, and also I think about like the district as a whole, and not wanting us to be in a situation where people are worried about their jobs, um, or we're having to make cuts that are even harder. So, rock and a hard place, um, a lot of work has gone into the decision, thank you.
Very well said, Maggie, thank you.
I think that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to item eight point six. Uh, Dr. Mueller will now present the 2025 Holman High School Candidates for Graduation and the 2026 graduation date. This item will appear on tonight's consent agenda.
Okay, this is one of my favorite moments. It's a lot of hard work, I think of all the time all of our educators and all of our staff, I think, around, throughout the whole district have put in. And then you think of the parent, well, all the support systems and families and parents. But we, I'm presenting to you this evening, um, two-hundred-and-ninety students are candidates to graduate from Holman High School on May twenty-fourth. And this is dependent upon their successful completion of academic requirements. And the graduation will be held May twenty, oh, that's for next year. I'm like, no, it's on the twenty-fourth this year, I know this, in that, and it's at eleven AM at the La Crosse Center. And then we are proposing that the graduation date for next year be held on May twenty-third of twenty-twenty-six, would be the Saturday next year, um, also at the La Crosse Center. So, um, this is that we have graduation coming up this next Saturday. We won't have another board meeting before this as to why this is, um, a listing of all two-hundred-and-ninety students that we would bring before you at graduation ceremonies next Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item eight point seven. Director of Transportation Dan Garrett and Assistant Director of Transportation Andrea Gulke will present the Transportation Eligibility Update. This item will appear on the May twenty-seventh consent agenda.
Hello, Dan Garrett here.
Andrea Gulke.
Hello, thank you for having us.
You might refer to Andrea and I sometimes referring to this as our specialized-only transportation zone. That's what we call it. When we talk about it, that's because these zones all, they're still specialized in 4K transportation going through those areas. So when we talk about it, we call it the specialized-only transportation zone. So if we refer to that, we're still talking about the same non-eligible transportation, um, areas or zones. Just wanted to say that because I know I'm gonna say it one time through here. Um, go ahead, um, while we're here, um, this, these slides have a lot of information on them. So if you'd like to stop us at the slide, please do, if not, we'll stop at the end to answer some questions.
Um, we're in the process of
We're in the process of building. Most of these routes are done. They're being edited and finalized for next year. We started early because of the 4K and the boundary changes. During this process, the last few months, we found out that we're getting a lot of driver retirement. And we have several drivers that are, have either already have left for the year, or they've decided that they're not coming back for the year, for next year. As some of you have probably known, the last few years, we've had some issues with our trips. We've had to postpone, move, adjust. We try not to, but even cancel trips. In the background, we're doing everything we can. We're, we're driving, mechanics are driving, we're rescheduling everything. We try to consolidate routes so we can have a driver available. But as our routes get fuller, that's becoming harder and harder to do. So, we've had to, this year, we've had to cancel three, not trips, but three routes. Two 4K and a high school, middle school route were canceled because we could not provide the transportation. We were, there was nobody around to drive. We did send out a bus afterwards, so we didn't cancel them. We didn't tell the students that we cannot pick them up. We did go an hour later when a driver came back to get these students. Most of them did get transportation to school, but that is something we don't like to do. But it seems like every day, it's just bound to happen, and finally, it did. And just to be physically responsible, we are trying to eliminate a route, at least, for the next school year. And that's something that we said we would try and do, and so, that's one of the reasons we're here to look at that as well. It's a difficult step for us, hard for us to do. We, you know, our job is to get students to school. That's what we like to do. That's what we want to do. It's just getting very difficult when the position we're in to continue that. Let's see here. This is the current reality of where we're at right now. We're operating, luckily, we're operating with all of our routes filled. We have a lot of coaches that are thankfully stepping up and taking their students. So, I really thank all the coaches who are doing that. We have coaches that are not just taking their teams, but they're helping out with other sports activities. So, that's very great of them. We're still in the middle of a national driver shortage. You see it everywhere. It's still in the news. We're not getting the applicants that have in the past, and that's just, seems like it's getting a little bit better, but we're not getting the applicants that we need. As I said already, the directors, mechanics, subs, we have just about everybody driving weekly, if not daily. It's, we're asking for a lot of help. Luckily, we're getting it most days. Our goal is to maintain a stable, reliable, and safe transportation for students. Is that what we strive to do? It's beginning to get really difficult to put all of the puzzle together and make that a reality for the foreseeable future. Jump in whenever you want.
Okay.
So, a lot of things we're noticing that is causing these shortages outside of the national driver shortages, we're having a lot of our senior drivers are start stepping down, or they're not available as frequently as they were before. They used to come and take trips for us. Now, they're like, you know, "I'll still do my routes, but I'm no longer going to do trips." So, slowly, we're losing the availability that we had before. Drivers to get leave time, for an example, a medical procedure or an appointment, there is not that flexibility that they used to have where they could ask, "Can we change to summer?" They're getting told more and more that you have to take this date, or somebody else is going to take your spot. So, we're running into drivers that are having, instead of waiting for the summer, which they tried to do, they have to take time off during the school year. Our substitute driver pool is small, but thankfully, we do have a pool. We actually, when we lost drivers during the year, just about the same time, we had just finished training a new sub, and then they offered to take on that route. So, we did lose a driver, but then we lost a sub taking the regular route. So, it's just a never-ending cycle like that. Training drivers takes time. It takes a minimum of one month to train a driver, and that's just to train a driver to drive. Then, we have to work on getting them comfortable with the area, getting them comfortable with the students. So, it's a, it's a longer process than just getting your CDL. And we've had a lot of drivers out sick this year. I think, I think all buildings had a lot of drivers out sick. The system that we have is really fragile. There's a lot of moving parts that are going on a daily basis. We're having, we do a lot of shuttles for sporting events to get them from, to practice and training and things like that. It's getting harder and harder to find a driver who wants to come in for that one-half, you know, that hour, forty-five minute commitment. We have several routes that are at capacity, so we're, we actually have some routes that are scheduled for eighty-plus people on them, and those are high school, middle school. Knowing that we'll probably have ten percent students not show up, luckily, that's been the case. And then, we have other routes who we have sixty, seventy students on them, and we're lucky if twenty, twenty of those students ride. Just depending on the area, how close they are to the schools, we get a lot of students that just aren't utilizing that transportation. We think it can be because of the driving time. You know, some of our routes are so long that I could probably walk to school before I wait for this bus.
Our bus capacity, our average bus capacity is seventy-seven passengers. That is three students to every seat. So, when we talk about being overcapacity, we have eighty-five kids scheduled, knowing a lot of those kids don't ride. If they did suddenly ride, we would really be in a pickle.
Yeah, and when one of our, one of these pieces fell, when a driver doesn't show up, when we have to cancel a route, when we have to cancel a trip, that just adds more burden to our subs who are already working on a daily basis. And those subs don't really want to work full-time. They, they came here for a part-time job to work as needed, but we're asking them to work every day. And so, they're at the point where they're telling us, "No." Just, you know, for years, I've been telling you, "Yes, I'll come in and do it, but I don't want a full-time job. I'm sorry, I can't do it today." So, when those, when all that comes together, that's when we end up canceling a route. So, we are looking at increasing our non-eligibility zones. So, some people call these walk zones. We call these specialized-only transportation zones. That would be, we're adjusting the service area, so we did do some boundary changes. None of those boundary areas are affected by the expanded non-eligibility zones. We are looking at areas that are close to the schools as part of the UHD, which we did, was it last year? All of the areas that we're picking are not in that UHD, which is an unusual hazardous zone. They are in a zone that is deemed by the sheriff and by DPI to be a safe zone to get to school. And so, these zones would still have 4K and specialized transportation in them. And we are looking at expanding the amount of students that are on, not eligible for the buses. The results of approving all the recommendations would be the elimination of at least one additional route and reduce student capacity. We do find that we have more behavior issues when we have seventy-six elementary students on a bus, sitting three to a seat. We deal with, how many behavior issues a day would you say we deal with? It gets a lot because there's no, no room for the students to get away. They're stuck sitting next to somebody whether they want to or not. That was a lot of information. And coming forward, it's going to be a lot more information. The maps are going to be a little bit crowded, so I just wanted to go through. So, the numbers for next year, if we talk about them, those are approximate. They can change. They will change. The actual rider count, so we took a rider count, so when Andrea and I ride a bus, or we talk to the driver, we'll talk to them, "How many students are you actually having on your bus?" And so, these numbers do fluctuate. Sports is a big thing. You know, during wrestling season, I only have twenty-eight students during, you know. So, sports has a big effect on that. But a lot of time, it's just the zone that they're driving for. It's like, you know, Dan, I only have, you know, twenty of my sixty students riding on any given day. And so, that is some of those numbers that we're going to show you. We're going to start with the UHT map, which is showing you what the, which we deemed as unusually hazardous. That will be in pink, like it was on our, on that presentation. So, everything else in the clear and the white is a safe-to-walk zone. We're going to look at the current safe routes. This is another thing that we're going to be doing. We're going to be working with Travis to add maps like this for all the other zones, giving you a path to take and a suggested group to walk with, where to go. I know I'm missing something about UHT that I was going to remember. So, then, we're going to talk about the proposed zones and the distances. You'll see small circles on these maps. So, the first number is going to talk about the total number of students. So, that's the total number of students. I'll say we're talking about Evergreen. So, in that zone, it's going to talk about how many students that go to Evergreen are in that area. The second number is going to be how many of those students request transportation. And that third number is going to be an approximate number of how many people are actually utilizing transportation. Any questions with that?
Dan, is the total, the total eligible to ride transportation or the total number?
The total number of students for that area.
Okay.
So, so, just if it's for a high school, it would be high, total high school students. So, we're going to talk about Evergreen first. So, we, we expanded that when we added a specialized-only transportation zone. That zone right now has a total of twenty-three students in it. Then, we go on to what the proposed zone is. So, the proposed zone for Evergreen would be the neighborhood that is east of Long Cooley Road. We are working with the Village County, putting in crosswalk and sidewalk. There's already plans to put a sidewalk on Juniper Lane. So, we'd like to utilize that as one of the suggested routes for this zone, is to take Juniper. And with the construction at Evergreen, that's going to lead them pretty much to a sidewalk that's going to be right across the front door. At that intersection, we plan to put up some more of them RFID, the flashing lights, so that crosswalk would have the flashing lights in that zone. So, this zone has forty-seven Evergreen students in it. Twenty-nine of them have registered for transportation. And on the average, we see about fourteen students actually utilizing transportation on every given day. That does include any special needs students in that area. Middle school. Middle school currently in the zone that we have, which is basically just north and south of the middle school, we have twenty students registered for the middle school in that zone. We are looking at expanding that zone. There's a lot of numbers on here, but we're taking in some smaller communities, smaller neighborhoods. So, we'll start with the neighborhood that is just north of McHugh Road. So, it would be, do you know the name of the neighborhood that's in there?
Tamarack.
Tamarack. So, that one taken into account, Tamarack. Right now, we have a currently five students, five students requesting, and approximately two students who utilize it. The last few weeks that I've done this route, I have not picked up a middle school student from that area. So, that two is coming from the driver, what the driver told me is approximate. The biggest zone we're looking at is just south of that, so south of McHugh. This would be, it's equivalent to what our current high school zone would be. So, this would be going to Starlight. So, it would be going from Briggs Road to Holman Drive, then north McHugh, and to Starlight. So, in that zone, we have approximately thirty-four, thirty of them request transportation, and we do have about approximately twenty-two that actually utilize transportation in that zone. So, that's one of the biggest zones that we see. We do have some neighborhoods that are just south of here, and we have approximately eight middle school students, and most of them do ride in that zone. Across the street, this was already in the zone that we had suggested, but we were, we are still picking up students in that zone. We're picking up, well, we're not picking up any students in that zone, but approximately two students requested transportation in that zone. None of them utilized it. And we're looking at the same area on Long Cooley Road that has Evergreen students in it. But this would be just middle school students who live in that area. We're looking at approximately seven students who use a ride on a regular basis. Again, these numbers could fluctuate with activities. High school. High school, the current number of students that are in the non-eligible zone are eighty-seven students. The two, the three zones that we're looking at adding would be the neighborhood that is north of middle school. And that is McHugh Street, Lee Street, Morris. In that zone, we have approximately three students who are actually riding. We're looking at the same neighborhood on Irene Place. We have approximately one student who's riding in that area. And then, the biggest change would be adding more of the Remington Hills area. So, it would be from Starlight down. That would be the biggest impact. There are quite a few students in that area. A lot of them do, do request transportation. On the average, we have forty, and I think that's a low number. That's probably because of the sporting events really affect that, that location because of the number of students in there. Just some distances. So, from Evergreen, I tried to do this, and how somebody would walk, I tried to use the zone that we would suggest as walking. And we're looking at not even a mile, it's like point seven-five miles. I'm pretty sure it's a few hundred feet. For the middle school, I tried to take the longest distances I could find. And again, I tried to use a walk zone that somebody could actually use. And we came up with approximately one point four-one miles for the farthest area in that zone. And then, for the high school, again, using one of the recommended paths, approximately one point eight or nine-three miles, and that's going from, from their door to the high school front door. We've worked a little bit in the past with the sheriff to come up with a safe route, and we would do that again. If the zones are approved, we'd be working with Travis to come up with suggestive walking areas, working with the schools to see about putting out more information on, you know, maybe there's a signup board if there, everybody could, a carpool board, or a let's walk together board, something like that. The projected outcome is we would have the reduction of one full route, improve driver workload, flexibility in case of emergencies. Once again, if we did have to cancel a route for some reason, it was, this would give us more flexibility to try and split a route up into other buses, where right now, we really don't have that capacity anymore. Lower student count per bus, which can create a calmer and safer environment for all. We know this is a difficult choice. Like I said, it's not one we're excited about making, but it's one that we think will help with the driver situation and elimination of one route, which will help us financially as well. Questions?
I have a few.
Yes.
You mentioned when you were talking about Evergreen, that those numbers included special needs students. Would they still be bused?
Yes.
You also mentioned that a part of the reason that the students aren't riding are after-school activities, sporting affects their ride home. Have you reached out to any other families? Do we know why others aren't riding possibly? Has that?
We have, we've probably talked to some. We have not done a big phone surveys or any type of a survey, but just individually talking to some students. Some students find friends that they're riding with, but the parents want to keep them on just in case, or the student gets their vehicle, and the families want to keep them on just in case. A lot of the things we run into at the beginning of the year, we are a little bit heavier. And as the year progresses, the numbers drop off pretty dramatically. And I think a lot of that is due to the drive times for the bus, when we're looking at an hour on the bus.
We also do see a lot of students walking now that it's nicer out.
And then, lastly, because you had talked about the shortage of the bus drivers, and I've heard it, yeah, I know it's everywhere. I've heard, I've heard stories about what goes on in other districts. But, can you please let us, just everybody know how much the starting wage is right now for bus drivers? And is it full-time? And if it's not, how many hours a week is it?
It's approximately twenty-five hours a week, and the rate is twenty-five eighty-six an hour. We're one of the higher paying in the area. And most of it is an AM and PM route. Like I said, we have actually had, this last year, we've had more applicants than we've had in the last four years or so. Like I said, we have actually had, this last year, we've had more applicants than we've had in the last four years or so. But at the same time, we're losing drivers. And so now they're just replacing it and we're still at that deficit of subs. It has been exciting to see the applicants come through.
Do you know how you've had the most success in finding applicants?
Really, it's been word of mouth is where we're getting all of it. The last sub-driver who came in, he heard about it because of an email I sent out saying that be ready to have your route canceled, you know, be ready in case of an emergency. He read that and then he came in and applied. Our drivers talk to their friends. We've had one applicant come in because one of our drivers was nonstop about, you need to come to work for Holman.
And coaches.
And coaches.
Coaches have been amazing. We can also share that our third-party tester, so the gentleman who actually does the testing for the C D L, told us that we by far have the most applicants come through. He had to take a second job because he wasn't paying the bills anymore with C D L applications, because they've fallen off that dramatically in our area. So we're actually doing a lot better than a lot of other districts, unfortunately.
Yeah, a lot of the, I think a lot of the districts are maybe in the place we were last year, really struggling to find anyone to come through the doors.
Yeah, so over the last like two or three years, we've implemented a lot of different initiatives and strategies to help out what's going on with transportation. And I, and I know it's been really, really challenging for you all. But I kind of made a list. So I know we've done like the one-mile walking zones, we've done route consolidations, we've done float bus drivers, extra trip bus drivers, the boundary realignment. And now we're doing transitioning to four, four K to elementary schools. And all of these things are to help, I mean, part of them is to help with transportation. And I would like to think that at least the cumulative effect of all of it together is making a difference. But I feel like we are still always in the same situation with transportation. And I guess I'm just looking to hear more from you on why, why these challenges are not improving.
Actually, I think some of those have improved. And I think that's why we've had more drivers come in the door than we have lately. The issue we're dealing with is like during this school year, we lost two drivers through the school year. And they were replaced with those two drivers that were just gonna be our brand-new subs. And so that put us back, you know, at stage zero. And then we do have applicants in the works right now because they've heard that we have some retirees that are gonna be leaving us next year. So we're just at a point where a lot of our retirees are hitting their retirement age and they're ready to be done. We do have one driver who expressed that they're frustrated with the behavior on the bus. And that it's really hard to control seventy screaming kids behind you. And he's like, Dan, I'm sorry, I'll finish this year, but I can't come back. And those are things that we're trying to work with.
Dan, do you wanna highlight about the float position?
The float position, we finally filled it, or I say we're in the process of filling it. We are towards the end stages of training our first float driver. And the day he's done, he's gonna take over for a driver who's leaving for a medical, well, who's already left for a medical appointment. And we're subbing that out.
So we won't have a float?
So it just seems likely.
Did we approve one float or two float?
We approved, we approved two. And this is the first one that applied and we hired, you know, so we finally hired one and immediately gonna put them on a route. So, so it did work. Otherwise, I don't think we'd be in the position we are now. We are still driving daily.
Daily.
Were you all done?
Sure.
Okay. So I know I sent some of my questions ahead of time. First, I just wanna acknowledge, yeah, this is another thing, right? Like we, it's not new. It's, we've heard about this multiple times. I know, I know you've done a lot of work. And even the slides, like it's really apparent, there's been a lot of very careful examination of what to do between the rock and the hard place. I have a couple questions. And I recognize this first one, like this really isn't our, it's not in our purview per se. But the Village of Holman has very spotty sidewalk placement in certain neighborhoods. Like on my own street, there's one, one house that doesn't have a sidewalk. Everything else has a sidewalk. Have we done any, like, can we like write a letter to the village? Can we advocate to the village and be like, look, this isn't helpful if ninety percent do it. We need connected pedestrian facilities.
I haven't talked to, I'm Chris Dahl, he's the engineer. I haven't talked to him directly about X road, X road and X road. In general, he did say that at this time, the village does not plan to expand the sidewalks in current neighborhoods. So a neighborhood, in an established neighborhood. Does, that doesn't mean I can't go to him and say, can you look at this road? For instance, on, on Evergreen, they are the ones putting in the sidewalk on Juniper. Cause right now, there's no sidewalk from Long Cooley to Russell Drive. So they, they have anticipated this growth in that neighborhood. And so since this is a growing neighborhood, they are gonna put a sidewalk in there. And that's where we're gonna work with them to place that flashing lights.
I, I wonder almost if like, can the board write a letter? Can we, can we have a resolution that says, you know, like we are in this rock and hard place with, with needing to get kids to school safely? I think everyone agrees that we want that to be done safely. And then there's this like, yeah, we don't wanna make the homeowners too mad and have them put a sidewalk in so that, so. I don't know that it has to come from you, cause I know you have to have like the working relationship. But like, can we have a resolution about?
It should be an ordinance thing though. Like in your neighborhood, they should be required.
I've asked him and there's this whole like, it's, it's an undeveloped, they have all these loopholes. And they have many years. And then they can just stick a for sale sign in the lot and be like, well, we might sell it someday.
Oh, so this is an un, like there's no house in that?
It's a, it's adjacent to a house and they put a big garden on it.
I know when we were working with the U H T with the sheriff, sidewalks was a consideration for a, a zone, but it's not the only requirement. They also look at the amount of traffic, what type of crossing you're going to do, how many students, times. You know, they look at a lot more than just the sidewalk. Sidewalks is a portion of what they look in to determine what a zone is gonna be labeled as, but it's not. And this is the same thing we did in Viking. As you know, around Viking, there's not sidewalks on every corner. It's like you're saying, one street has one, one street doesn't. But we also know that students utilize the path all summer long.
Right.
You know, that's not, it's not new to them.
Yeah. And I know that the other frustration with traffic is, right, there's so many organizations involved. There's like the municipality, there's the L I P C, there's all these different plans, there's the D O T. And I know it's a mess. I just, I feel like we keep coming back to this, like, you know, we can't keep busing. And then we're gonna infer that for some students, and, and there's an equity lens here too, with which families can just flex their day and drive their kids to school and which families are gonna have like a hardship with this. And I, I feel like we just have to do everything we can do. And if that's like a little bit of a political capital push, like, I mean, I'll do it personally if that's more palatable to everyone else. But like, I think it's just like really unacceptable for municipalities to be like, like shrug it off.
We definitely know it's difficult. And we try, we went by distance from the school. So we know that, you know, distance from the school goes through all types of neighborhoods. So we tried not to take that into account, which it is an issue. And it is something that has to be addressed as well as the increased traffic around the schools. Increased pedestrians. You know, we've already had meetings with our drivers, talking to them about, you're gonna see with these new zones, you're gonna see more bikers, you're gonna see more walkers, you're gonna see the kid on the scooter going sixty miles an hour. You know, you're gonna have to be aware of, there's gonna be a lot more challenges. So we are aware that it's going to increase.
You know, with your comment, Maggie, I think one thing that we could do is as we have, as we create more walk zones or non-eligible rider zones and that, you know, just really sharing that. And I can talk with our village, Scott Heinegg, and we can talk with Patrick Barlow about, these are walk zone, or the eligible areas that we are proposing in. Cause we worked very closely with them as we were doing, read the rework of Evergreen in the front. And we were working from the beginning as to their investment in that, cause they have to plan ahead of time too. So as, as we develop these and expand with this, we can work with them and say, this is our, the path that we would like our kids, can we invest in that for the students and in the community? And I know also they're down the road in a few years, they're gonna be doing some work on McHugh too. And I, I mean, I was just on a call with the Department of Transportation and the county and the village. And they get, they get funding through other grants and resources too. And if they know it's a need for us, there sometimes is that money. And we can maybe, you know, work with them on that in some of these areas, so.
Yeah, I think anything we can do is helpful, cause I feel like I bring this up every time we talk about this issue. And I recognize, you know, like a little residential neighborhood is, is very different. Like maybe they don't need a sidewalk because it's a cul-de-sac. But there were some spots in the maps, like when I pulled it up and kind of did the Google layers, there were some where like, those are industrial-ish areas with big trucks, more traffic. So like, I don't know if we can prioritize requests. But it just, it feels, I would feel better if we were doing everything we can to put a little pressure on improving bike ped accessibility.
The other thing is, is getting the students to use the sidewalks once they're there, cause we've had issues with that too, haven't we?
We did take into account some of the industrial area and, you know, as far as student walking. That's why, you know, it's like the, all of the middle school that we're suggesting is, you know, north of that area so that they would not be walking through any of the machinery that could be out there. Another zone that we took into consideration the last time we did this was for Viking. Because the people, the students would have to walk by festival food or around the Mayo Clinic. And so we did take those into consideration and we agreed that we weren't gonna allow that.
Yeah. Again, thanks for your work. I know there's a lot that goes into it, it just, that's a personal frustration of mine. The other couple of things I was gonna ask, one is just to level set. Correct me if this statement's wrong. So in most districts, there's a two-mile radius around the school. There's unusually hazardous transportation zones designated and no one else is bused. Is that correct?
In that two-mile zone, correct.
Yeah, in the circle. So we have historically had this like very nice busing service that most other districts aren't even offering.
Some districts don't even apply for that unusual hazardous transportation zone and it's two miles, period.
Sure.
That is, in order to get that U H T, you do have to work with your board and the sheriff and D P I in order to get those approved.
And we also do a lot more house stops. A lot of districts, it's you have to come down to the end of the block, we're not stopping in the middle of the block, we don't go down cul-de-sacs. We really do try to get kids to school with as little discomfort as possible.
Yeah. Another thing I hear from people is, I think, related to specialized transportation or potentially four K, where folks don't, don't understand why. Like if there's a small subset of parents who truly need transportation and there's a van that comes to their neighbor's house and picks someone up. Like why can't their kindergartner ride in the van too? And I don't know, like if that's allowed or if we've thought more about like a tiered approach to this. Like I think the idea of a survey was suggested, I think we talked about that last time it came to the board. Like can we ask parents, you know, is transportation for you, is it like nice to have? Or is it like, I can't work if I have to drop my kid off at eight-twenty? And then trying to, trying to somehow triage that a little bit with like, are there smaller vans that are already going there for specialized transportation? I'm just trying to think, like, is there any other safety net for the families that are disproportionately affected?
Our, some of our vans are designated as special needs and so that's the students we pick up. And, and we do understand that some families will not, you know, will have a harder time than other families. But we weren't in the position where we could say, we pick or choose who's gonna ride and who's not gonna ride. We just went by neighborhoods, by areas close to their school, as close as possible. So it would be as little impact as possible. As far as, we do send vans out to pick up students on a daily basis. If a family misses a bus, we will do whatever we can. They might be late to school. Because right now, you probably noticed I didn't purchase a van or a bus for next year. I'm purchasing some vans because our vans are being utilized very heavily. And we're at the point where we don't have enough vans to provide the transportation that is required by us.
There's also a funding distinction between specialized transportation and other transportation. If we put a student that does not have an I E P into that vehicle, we lose our specialized funding. And there are, there are absolutely cases where we've done that.
Yes. Well, I'm glad to hear about the vans because, I mean, as someone that works in chronic absenteeism world, you know, La Crosse School District, for example, has the two-mile radius. And my program had to contract with an agency to literally pick up kids because they were at two miles and with inclement weather and families were just saying like, I just don't feel like my kid is safe walking to school. I mean, so we pick up like eighteen to twenty-five kids a day. So I just want the district to be prepared for kind of what Maggie was saying from an, through an equity lens. There might be families that literally just can't get their kids to school. Maybe not necessarily like falling on you, but maybe an individual school might have to do some of those pickups at times.
And I think like the additional data, like I know people get surveyed out, but like I wish we had that data, right? I wish I knew of those twenty-two students in that neighborhood who are riding. Like, you know, could they be driven? Could they hitch a ride? Or, or is it like they ride because that's the only way they have to get to school? And there's the nice weather months where maybe it's doable, but like nobody wants their kid to walk a mile and a half when it's ten degrees. So I guess I would, I would feel better having the data from families to know like that we're not just leaving them with no option at all. And, and knowing that, I guess that we've like pulled out all the stops in terms of providing alternatives, whether that's like a group pickup point, like you said, more, other districts do more of. Like have them walk two blocks to a spot and get them there, you know, instead of saying walk a mile and a half. I, this one is really hard for me, cause I, I feel like we're, we're making it harder for kids to get to school who, where their family cannot fill that gap.
Yeah, Holman has been extremely lucky for our transportation. Even when my kids were going in elementary school, the bus would stop at every single house. And slowly, that has all had to slowly change. And now we're at this point where more change is needed. If we want to not have these cancellations, if, wait, I don't wanna drive every day.
We have also explored other options and I think we talked about it when we talked about U H T briefly. In town, we are already doing shuttles in the afternoon. So what we do is we, we have three different buses, they pick up only middle school. They take a bunch of middle schoolers home and then they get to the high school ten, fifteen minutes late, grab high schoolers, get them home. But then they have to be to elementary schools. So we have tried exploring options like that. It does make their routes even tighter than they already are. In the morning, next year, we are talking about maybe utilizing something similar. Unfortunately, that means the high school kiddos are gonna get to school quite a bit earlier. And then they have to sit there while we go get middle schools. And there just is a very limited time in which we can do those turnarounds.
And so the first tier, you know, because we do a tier system, so we go out in the morning, high school, middle school. Then we pick up elementary. So with high school, middle school, because they're the first pickup, we can start earlier and pick those students up. But then we have that one hour with elementary students. So then picking up the elementary students starts to become a challenge. And we do have some routes that are over and students are on for over an hour. It's something we don't like to see, but it's, they're getting to school.
And with how large our district is? And with how large our district is, um, like, in the afternoon, we have two high school, middle school buses, that they can't get back in time to do elementary runs. They just grab big kids, and they go out in the country, and they get back after four o'clock. So it's both time and the number of students on the bus that we're running into
Yeah.
Challenges with.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item eight point eight. Executive Directors Jill Mason and Kim Edwards will present the Joint Federal Accountability Report. This item is for report only and will not appear on a consent agenda.
Good evening. Yes, Jill and I get to wrap up the evening with the Joint Federal Accountability Report. Uh, this is a twenty-three, twenty-four report. Um, it actually has two components to it, the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA, that I'll cover, and then Jill will take the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act.
Hmm.
There we go.
Special touch.
There we go. So um, S is actually the most recent reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. So there's, oh, there's been a version of this law on the books since nineteen sixty-five. Um, the whole purpose of it really is to ensure educational equity for all students, um, which leads us into then, the accountability system that comes with it. And this is done through a series of identifications. So um, ESSA requires identification of our lowest performing schools, and then schools who have um, some of the lowest performing student groups um, in the state. So each state was required to submit a plan in terms of how they were going to identify students. Wisconsin's plan was approved in twenty-eighteen. So this is gonna look very familiar, because Wisconsin reuses a lot of the data that we use as part of our state report card. So as I said, this is a twenty-three, twenty-four. So we're not talking about the state assessments we just took, we're talking about the ones a year ago. So um, back in late October, early November, I um, shared with you the results of our state report card. We use much of the same testing um, on the federal notification packet, um, one difference being that we also bring in access scores. So for our multilingual students, we're looking at growth, um, year-on-year growth on access there as well. So then, all the calculations are reported out by school, and it's, you get an entire um, sum score for your student groups, or for students, uh, your student body as a whole, and then broken down by your student groups, your subgroups, for any group that has greater than twenty students. So there are three types of identifications, and you don't want any of them. Um, the first one is targeted support and improvement. This means that you have um, among the lowest performing subgroup or subgroups across the state. Uh, the next one is your whole building needs help. This is your comprehensive support and improvement.
I think you should title these.
There's a couple of different ways that you can fall into that category. And then finally, there's additional targeted support and assistance, which means you've already been tagged for targeted support and improvement, and now we're adding on another layer of that. Fortunately, we are nowhere near that. Um, there, have a series of threshold warnings, too. So we'll get a flag of, are you even getting close to you need to be aware of this? And we don't, we haven't even gotten to threshold warnings, which again, not super surprising, considering we're looking at primarily the same data that we look at on our state report card. And overall, while we still have areas that we definitely need to work on and continue to improve on, we're a pretty high-performing district, and um, overall do quite well. All of this is publicly reported data, so there is a link on there in case you wanna see, um, drill down more into how Holman's doing, or any, um, any of the, the districts are out there as well. It'll give you the summary score, uh, the percentile for each indicator area. Again, like I said, all students or each student group. And that is ESSA in a nutshell.
Any questions?
Questions on that piece?
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I'll go into IDEA. So as many of you know, IDEA is the law that makes um, public education eligible to all students, um, and it has to be free and appropriate. Um, it also helps us align to um, the services that we provide for our students with disabilities. It was, um, came into effect in nineteen seventy-five, reauthorized in nineteen ninety-seven, and two thousand and four. We have um, a few different compliance areas that we are evaluated on. Um, there's a point system, and it looks at things like disproportionality in special ed identification and discipline, timely evaluation of students referred for special education, transition between birth to three programs to school, um, and then post-high school transition, so after high school and beyond. And then correction of non-compliance with IDEA and timely and accurate data. So when we go through our procedural compliance review, which is what we're going through right now, um, we have to make sure we're correcting all of those non-compliance, um, or all the errors with DPI in a timely manner. And then, so there's fifty percent on compliance, fifty percent on results indicators. The results, we look at our graduation dropout, math participation and proficiency, ELA, and then the educational environment, which means how um, how much is a student um, learning in the general education setting. And then the determination, so like Kim, we have specific areas. We have meets requirements, um, needs assist, needs assistance, need intervention, and need substantial intervention. Um, we don't want the other ones other than meet requirements, but for this year, we did, um, we do need assistance in disproportionate. So I'll go over that in a second. But first of all, there is a celebration. So when we look at the compliance and the results, so both of those, again, are weighted fifty-fifty, we do meet those requirements. So that is a good thing. Um, since I've been here, we have not, I believe we have met every year, met the requirements. ELA has met the requirements for these two categories. So that's good. This is the first time, um, in my career, actually, that we have not met um, disproportionality. So it'll be an interesting data dig for our district. Um, and the place we didn't meet it is our evaluations for students with other health impairments for multi-race. Um, and again, that's not something, I thought for sure we would um, be flagged for autism, because we've seen such a rise, but that is not the area that is significant. So, um, we'll be working with DPI. This next, um, our next steps will be working with DPI to do a data dig. We have, um, we'll have to do a procedural compliance review on just that particular evaluation data um, for disproportionality. Um, and then we'll just be going through some improvement strategies. So it'll be really interesting for our teams to kind of um, work through that. And then we'll hopefully see some gains um, with those strategies. So, questions on that?
When would you present next, um, or bring back that information?
We probably, so some of these pieces have timelines, um, like the last, uh, not the last one, but the procedural compliance, probably that one's in October. I would say I, maybe January. I, I still, this, I literally, we just got this information not too long ago, so hopefully I'll get, once I work with DPI, a better timeline. Again, I haven't gone through this um, yet. And so, yeah, as soon as we kind of get everything pulled together, we'll definitely bring that back.
Great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda.
First.
For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item, or as discussed at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Would any board member like to pull an item out of the consent agenda to be discussed and or voted on separately? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
So moved.
Motion by Chris.
Second.
Second by Maggie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by say nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, next we'll move on to the board debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or committee reports you have. And tonight, we'll start with Chris.
Um, I was unable to make the policy meeting this last week, so I was, I'm hoping Maggie can provide an update on that. Um, other than, it was a pretty impactful meeting tonight. Um, a lot of, you know, I think I had fifty minutes plus of celebrations and awesome things going on within our district, but we also have some harsh realities that are, are impacting us as well. So, um, always a, a good, good thing to see the list of graduates come through. It's always a proud night. I mean, that's what we're here for, is the students and, and seeing that. But obviously, there's still, still a lot of work to do in the district. So, um, other than that, um, thanks for all those that came up presented tonight. It's always good to hear from students especially, um, and other people in the district that are doing a lot of work. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Lindsay?
Yeah, I wanna thank the host families. I think that's just such a neat opportunity we have to bring foreign exchange students to the district. It's always fun to hear from them. So thanks to, for volunteering to support an exchange student. And congrats to everyone that received awards this evening.
Okay, Maggie?
Um, uh, the policy committee did meet. It was a, a smaller group, and it was a shorter meeting, but we moved three policies forward to the board for their first reading. Um, and then, yeah, I'll echo, lot of celebration, lot of hard decisions. Um, and I think I will also just note that the joint finance committee is working on the state's budget right now. And a lot of our hard decisions are heavily influenced by what happens in the next biennial budget. Um, so if you have not reached out to your state legislators about um, how we have underfunded education for fifteen years, please do. Um, every, every call helps.
Okay, Bridget?
I would just echo what everyone has said thus far. The celebrations were amazing, and then countering that with the harsh realities, yeah, very impactful meeting tonight.
Okay, Barb?
Um, I just wanted to say another special congratulations to Camlin Roswell on her um, award for her um, leadership um, in the forensic world. Um, I was a product of forensics. And I know she has done an amazing job keeping the program going at Holman, so congratulations to her. And also, I just want to, you know, again, thank Julie and the rest of the administration for the work that has gone into our budget. And I will say again, Holman has gone a very long time before we've need, before we've gotten to this point. Other districts have had to go to referendum at least two times. We've now had a failed referendum, and that is why we are, part of the reason why we are in the position we are in. And I, I just hope that our community truly sees and understands why we are here, and supports us in the future.
Thank you. Abigail?
I do have a couple of things to bring up, just as the school year is winding down. First of all, this week is seniors' last week, which is a very big deal, especially considering as people have spent the whole year, especially this year with our new schedule, they feel that this moment is um, both coming in soon with the new schedule, and with the different calendar this year. And I think that they're very excited for the new opportunity. And we are also very fortunate that last week, we had Dancing with the Sports Stars. This was in support of our French teacher, Svetlana Ott. She was diagnosed with breast cancer about a year ago, and we were able to raise nearly seventeen thousand dollars for her. And we are very thankful for that. I know she is as well. I have her personally as a teacher, and she is just wonderful. And I think that it is good that we are be able to promote this, and that this event was completely um, promoted and built by a class within the school. It is our entertainment sports marketing class. This is, they are part of our DECA and business department. So we're very fortunate to have them to do this for us. And sort of as the mood for this meeting, the tensions that are happening in the district, kind of peripherally, sometimes it feels to the high school, is definitely felt by all the students. I cannot personally speak for middle school, elementary necessarily, but the high school, even with it being the end of the year, they definitely feel and understand sort of the gravity of the situation we're in. So what I've been doing personally is, and what I've sort of interpreted my role to be, is to make sure that they have as much information as possible. And as today, I published my first newsletter, that also, that was a recap of last week's meetings, so that they're up to date for this week. And I wanna continue to do that. So if there's any sort of initiatives that you would like me to promote to students, I'm happy to do that. Anything for the community that you would like me to promote, I would do that as well. And then AP testing has been happening for the last two weeks, another thing, just wrapping up the year, I myself have four tests, which is a lot to prepare for. And I know a lot of students are in the same boat. Staff appreciation was a big success last week. I think that, especially with the cuts in wages, or the lack of increase, I should say, we are definitely looking to continue, especially with student council, to make those efforts more known. Um, financial planning and referendum, especially, I'd like to promote, just as Barb Wench said, that was very well put. And we are not done yet, though. We still have many concerts and school activities that I think that students are very excited for. So there's definitely some things to grow on, and students are aware of, but I think that they also wanna continue to celebrate through the end of the year.
Well, well said. Um, I don't have anything else to add. So, um, moving on to item ten point three, the board has been provided notes from the January twenty-seventh finance and the March fifth policy committee meetings. So please take a look at those. Um, the board has also been provided with updates to four policies that the policy committee has advanced to the board for consideration. If a board member has any questions regarding a policy, they should reach out to Dr. Mueller prior to the May twenty-seventh meeting, where the policies will appear on the consent agenda for approval. And moving on to our upcoming board meeting schedule, on May twenty-first, um, it is senior recognition night at six-thirty at the Fine Arts Center. On May twenty-fourth, we have our high school graduation ceremony at the La Crosse Center at eleven AM. On May twenty-seventh, we have a retiree reception at six PM, followed by a board meeting at seven PM. And just a reminder that those occur on a Tuesday evening, um, not a Monday evening, due to Memorial Day. And then on May thirtieth is the last day of school, and then June ninth will be the next board meeting at seven PM. So is there any other business that needs to come before the board at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Maggie has moved.
I'll second.
Chris has seconded to adjourn the meeting at nine oh seven PM. Motion carried. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by say nay.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.